...meeting and budget public hearing number two. All right, Ms. Caddell, can you please do roll?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Tice?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell. Could everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Now, we'd like to move on to 1.04, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I please have a motion? Mr. Ortiz?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Do I have a second? Mr. Anderson, thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. All right, we're excited. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Noonan. We're going to get ready for the Team FCCPS Spotlight.
Thank you, Chair Gould and Vice Chair Tice and School Board members. Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Noonan. I'm the Superintendent of Schools here tonight. Well, actually, every night. But happy to be here tonight. Tonight is a huge honor for us. This is a very special meeting because it's the night that we recognize the employees of the system that have done extraordinary work on behalf of FCCPS. In the process of going through the multitude of employees that have been nominated and selected and ultimately are here tonight, there are so many wonderful people in Falls Church City. But tonight, the people that we're going to recognize are those folks that really carry the mantle for our school system in a way that is pretty special. So tonight, sort of the run of the show, if you will, since we have a lot of people here tonight, is first, we'd like to share a video. This is our spotlight on Team FCCPS. It's an opportunity for us to hear a little bit about what some people said about each of the employees that are going to be recognized tonight. And then after the remarks in the video, what we'd like to do is invite up first our Professional Specialist of the Year, and I'll invite you up when it's time. Second, our Academic Support Staff of the Year. Third, our Operational Support Staff of the Year. Fourth, and finally, our recognition of our Teacher of the Year. So with that, we'll go ahead and kick off our video. And this is a great opportunity to hear a little bit about each of the people that have been nominated for this incredible award. Hello. I'm here to announce the winners of the four awards that are presented to Falls Church City Public Schools employees. This year, we changed the process a bit to remove barriers to nominations, and it worked. We had more nominations and letters of support than ever before. They came from colleagues, parents, community members, students. Reading these letters of nomination and support was so inspirational. It's never easy to select one winner for each award because we have so many amazing employees in Falls Church City Public Schools. I am going to announce the four winners, and then their supervisors will tell you a little bit about each one of them. We've also got longer videos about each honoree with testimonials from many others, and they are fun. The Falls Church Education Foundation Teacher of the Year Award is presented to a teacher who inspires learning, encourages individual growth, demonstrates subject matter expertise, fosters collaboration, and leads by example. The winner this year shares her love of science with students and empowers them to learn more about the world around them. She's a master collaborator and a creative force in Falls Church City Public Schools and Oak Street Elementary. Congratulations to Tosin Adetoro, our esteemed teacher at Oak Street Elementary. You are our Teacher of the Year.
Congratulations, Tosin. We are so proud of you to be our Teacher of the Year for Falls Church City Public Schools. You are very deserving of that title. You bring it every single day. You keep students first. You keep inquiry at the forefront and excitement for learning. Any time of day, we might find you launching hot air balloons out front on Seton Lane, or we might find you at night looking out at the sky through telescopes. You involve the entire community. You involve our entire staff, and you bring every student to learning each and every day. And they will take that with them into Mary Ellen Henderson, Meridian, and beyond.
The Professional Specialist of the Year Award recognizes a specialist who provides outstanding service to students and colleagues, is an outstanding leader, and fosters collaborative relationships. Our winner this year does it all with our youngest learners. She's the heartbeat of Jessie Thackeray Preschool. Congratulations to speech therapist Mary Manzione.
What Mary means to us, Mary means everything to us. Mary is not only JTP, she's everything about JTP. She's one of the first faces that our friends see when they go through the child find process. Our families as well look forward to seeing Mary because they've heard how much of an institution she is here in Falls Church City. Mary Manzione not only helps out the students that are assigned to her caseload, but she also gives us that great motherly advice that those of us that are mothers need and those of us that aren't parents that need as well. Mary's always here to lend a helping hand. She's always here even during times of when you need something just on the side. Mary's right there to help you. Mary has just been not only a friend to everyone here at JTP, but to all of the students as well. We have our students who are here that are not on her caseload, and they're like, "I want to go see Ms. Mary. I want to go see Ms. Mary." So you don't know how important Ms. Mary is here to JTP? Come by and visit us at any time, and you will see she is the heartbeat and the cement of our building.
The Academic Support Staff Employee of the Year is an award for an employee who provides excellent service to students and employees. The winner makes everything work smoothly at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. She keeps everyone organized, works with administrators, teachers, students, parents, to build and strengthen the community. We all know her. Congratulations to Jessica Hollinger, the extraordinary administrative assistant at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School.
Jess is amazing. So nothing that we do here at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School would be possible without Jess. She makes things happen. She's a go-getter. She is the organization that runs everything behind the scenes. One of my favorite things Jess does is her Jess Says in our newsletter. So Jess does so much work on our staff newsletter, but one of my favorite things she does is the Jess Says because you just hear these little personality points in everything that we're doing, and people get to hear that. Honestly, I don't know how I would be surviving this year without Jessica. Just absolutely the person who makes me feel supported, safe, and like we have everything under control.
For the Operational Support Staff Employee, I was so excited in February that our custodial supervisor Eduardo Molina would be the recipient of this year's award. His employees call him El Jefe, and they were thrilled to be part of his recognition. Sadly, Eduardo passed away suddenly in March, and our celebration of his service to FCCPS has become a celebration of his entire life. Eduardo spent more than three decades as support staff employee here in Falls Church City, and the outpouring of love that we've seen over the past few weeks has been overwhelming. We all knew him, we all loved him, and we will all miss him. But congratulations posthumously to Eduardo Molina, our Support Employee of the Year.
So I want to personally congratulate Eduardo Molina on this award. I've had the pleasure of working with Eduardo in two capacities. First, as Maintenance Supervisor, and secondly, at my current position of Director of Facilities. Eduardo is always a pleasure, always kind-hearted, always looking to help others. There could not be a better person to win this award.
All right, so at this time, we would love to invite up our awardees, their families and their guests this evening, to receive a small token of our appreciation. And as we do that, I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the Education Foundation here in the city of Falls Church. And I know some of them are in the back tonight. We've got Mary Asel, who is the President of the Board of the Ed Foundation, who helps support this work tremendously. And through their efforts, I think everyone in this room got a little something extra special when they were awarded. So thank you to the Ed Foundation. But we want to start with the Academic Support Staff Member of the Year, and that is Jessica Hollinger. Jessica, would you come up and receive your award? And bring your family, bring your friends. This one you might need to go up though for. So next, we would very much like to welcome this evening the family and friends of Mr. Eduardo Molina. Eduardo, of course, was our custodial supervisor that sadly passed earlier this year. But as I said in the video, and I mean it tonight, going through this process for us in the Falls Church City Public Schools and being part of his family has been, in some ways, therapeutic because it gave us an opportunity to remember Eduardo in so many different ways for his incredible work, his incredible support, and everything he's done for our community. So friends and family, please come join us for a picture, and please help me congratulate Eduardo Molina. Next, we'd like to congratulate our academics, I'm sorry, Professional Specialist of the Year. And our Professional Specialist of the Year, as you heard, is Ms. Mary Manzione. Mary has been just a star word in the Falls Church City Public School system for a long time and is the both formal and informal leader of sort of the east end of Falls Church. So help me congratulate Mary Manzione on her extraordinary work. Oh, I'm being asked to tell my Mary Manzione story. Mary, may I tell the story?
Tell us how old I am.
This is a great story, and I won't bore you with all the details. But when I came to Falls Church City as the superintendent, I'm now in my eighth year, I went and saw Mary at JTP, and we were talking just sort of generally about where we were from and what we believed in. And she said, "Yeah, I grew up in Alexandria City." And I said, "Oh, my grandmother was a teacher in Alexandria City Public Schools for 30 years." And she said, "Well, what was her name, and where did she teach?" And I said, "Well, her name is Audrey Parkinson, and she taught at Polk Elementary." And she goes, "Oh, my gosh, she was my second grade, third grade teacher at Polk Elementary." And went on to say some very nice things about my grandmother. But it was a reminder of how small the world of education is and made me sort of extraordinarily proud of my grandmother for helping someone extraordinary as you become who you are today. So congratulations to you.
She was my third grade teacher, and I'm not married to her, including that. So I was in the second grade math book, so she covered it, so nobody else could do it. I still have her report card, let me remind you.
Oh, I'd love that. Well, thank you. Congratulations again, Mary. And last and certainly not least, our Ed Foundation Falls Church City Teacher of the Year, Tosin Adetoro. Tosin, as you walk up, I'm going to say a few words about you and invite your family to come with you and your friends as well. I had an opportunity several years ago to hire Tosin, and she came to us, some of you may not know, but she was the Science Educator in Residence at the Uthvar Hasi Center out by the airport. And when she came in and interviewed, it was a no-brainer. And she has done extraordinary work for us here in the city of Falls Church, really helping grow the love of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, certainly at Oak Street Elementary. But Tosin is taking on a new role this year to continue her influence in the city of Falls Church schools. And next year, she will be the Sustainability Coordinator at the high school and work with the high school, middle school, and elementary students in science, technology, engineering, and math, and art education. So congratulations to you, Tosin. Suzanne Ladkey, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. I saw you earlier, but I do want to say thank you. Thank you to you also as the Ed Foundation Director and the extraordinary work you do as well. So thank you for being here. And Sharon Scholler. We'd love to offer the opportunity to anyone who'd like to say something.
Because I know my husband would come up and say something. That's the way he was. He loved working with all of you. He enjoyed being part of this community for 30 years. There was not a time that he said, "Oh, I don't want to go into the job." He loved it. Even when he's on vacation, he was working. And he would always say that his, the recognition that he got, it's not for him, it's for the people that worked for him. He was very proud of his staff. He always said that his staff is what always made him look good. So he was proud of them also. And I know that he would share this award with them. Thank you.
On behalf of the School Board, Dr. Noonan, all the teachers, staff, parents, community members, students, we really appreciate all the dedication that you all provided to our students every day. And we also appreciate all the families to make the travel. I think some of the family members might have even surprised some of the awardees tonight by showing up. So we appreciate your support and everybody coming out. So thank you very much. And we look forward to all the great things that will continue to happen. So thanks for the magic. So we will, that'll be 3.01. We'd now like to move to students. And so we're going to move to the 3.02, Recognition of Student Representatives to the School Board Advisory Committees for the 2023-2024 school year. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to, Dr. Noonan, do you want to talk about the student reps and their roles in the community?
I do. Let me just pull it up here real quick. So first of all, let me just say that one of the really great things about the city of Falls Church is that we are small, we are relational, and we get to know our kids really well. And as a consequence of that, a lot of our School Board committees and other committees have students on them. And I think the example is even this board has a student representative because we believe in the city of Falls Church that the student voice is absolutely invaluable to the process. So tonight, we get an opportunity to recognize student representatives who have been on advisory committees for the last year. We're going to appoint some new advisory committee members for next year. We're going to appoint a student representative, excuse me, to the School Board. And lastly, we're going to recognize our extraordinary School Board member, Mr. Sean Lewin, who is going to be embarrassed tonight with a whole resolution read about him. But tonight, we'll hear who our new appointees are for the Business in Education, English Speakers of Other Languages, Extended Daycare Board, Health and Wellness, Gifted and Talented, and Special Education. And I would just add one more thing to say that, and no pressure to those of you that are coming onto these boards and commissions, these folks that we're going to recognize tonight were at almost every meeting and did not miss and really took these jobs seriously and gave really good student voice to their committees and were very appreciative of their efforts. So with that, Chair, I will turn it back to you to recognize in 3.02.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. I'm going to go ahead and provide the names, and if you could please come up, we're going to go ahead and recognize with a picture of the School Board for those who are attendants. First, with BIe, and I do apologize for the pronunciations in advance. BIe, we'd like to recognize Alessio Zimpor. For Esal Committee, we'd like to recognize Daphne Aaron. For the Extended Daycare Board, we'd like to recognize Charlotte Hill. For the Health and Wellness, we'd like to recognize Morgan Knight. For Gifted and Talented, we'd like to recognize Albetel Kairos. And for Special Education, we'd like to recognize Delia Peridiso. So if you could all please come up.
Whoa. There's your Alessio.
Yeah, we'll stay here.
Okay.
There's Alessio, all right.
How's your chair? Okay, I'm glad you're here.
We have these in the water.
There you go.
Yes. All right. All right.
I guess we'll stand there, you're the center of attention.
Yeah. We'll climb in here.
Please.
All right. Yeah.
There you go.
All right. Thank you, guys. As Dr. Noonan said, these students, they attended board meetings, they attended committee meetings, they put in the work. And there was a significant amount of work, and some of the topics and some of the engagements were much more focused, less on students sometimes, and more that impacted our community. So we really appreciate the student voice and the student representation and the dedication. So thank you for all your service. We're very excited and proud that you are our great representatives for our community. So now we're going to move on to our Appointment of Student Representatives, 3.03, to the School Board Advisory Committees. So these are our new students that will be coming on, and we are very excited for their participation as well. So we will go ahead and look for a recommended action from someone on the board. We're going to do a, Dr. Noonan, is that?
Yes, that, so this would be a motion here.
So let's see for a motion from the board for 3.03, and then we'll call them up. Ms. Silverman?
I too am going to try my best with the names. Excuse me for any mispronunciations. I move that the School Board approve the following student representative appointments to the School Board Advisory Committees for the 2024-2025 school year. Sorry? BIe Tyler Wang, Esal Albatel Kiroz, Gifted and Talented Claire Weatherly, Health and Wellness Sylvia Witt, and Special Education Ash Stoner.
All right. So we'll go ahead and, we're going to need a second. Thank you, Ms. Henderson. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, now we can approve it. All right, if you can come all up, we'd like to take a picture. All right, and now we'll move on to 3.04. And this one is the recognition and the appointment of the student representative to the School Board for the 2024-2025 school year. So we're going to look for a motion in a second, but this representative is going to be sitting where Mr. Lewin sits and providing a critical student voice to the School Board for all the activities and all the different issues and policies that we have. Big role to fill for Mr. Lewin, but we'll talk about him in just a bit. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion for the recommended action in 3.04. Ms. Murphy?
I recommend that the School Board approve the appointment of Charlotte Rice as the student representative to the School Board for the 2024-2025 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right, any opposed? All right, Ms. Rice. Is Ms. Rice, yep? All right, and it's official, and Ms. Rice is locked in for a whole year. So Ms. Rice, we all look forward to working with you this coming year. All right, and I think that's it for the recognitions. it for the recognitions. Oh, one more. 3.05. We'd like to finally recognize the 2023-2024 student representative to the school board and adoption of resolution 11-24 student representative to the school board. First, I'd like to get a motion. So no one's going to do a motion because you can't leave. So that's now official. So can I actually get a motion? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. We have to let them go, folks.
I move that the school board adopt resolution 11-24 Sean Lewin, 2023-24 student representative to the school board as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Teis. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Any opposed? All right. All right. So we're going to go ahead and read into the resolution. Yeah. This is, this resolution is going to honor all the work that Mr. Lewin has provided to the school board on behalf of students at Meridian, but also in terms of the community. And Mr. Lewin has done an impressive job, jumping in there, giving his value, his opinion on different student matters, helping us. And we've really enjoyed working with him. And I think he, I think the joke is that he has actually attended more school board meetings than many of the school board members themselves. But his dedication on the school board, I think Ms. Hlatke and others on the foundation, he's everywhere in the community. And he's really been great to work with. And so we're really going to miss working with him, but we're looking forward to honoring him with this resolution. And it starts. Resolution 11-24, whereas Sean Lewin was appointed in June 2023, and since July 2023, has served the Falls Church City Public Schools with distinction as the 2023-2024 student representative to the Falls Church City School Board. And whereas Mr. Lewin co-founded and served as president of the Meridian Chapter of Our Minds Matter and was on the National Organization's Teen Advisory Board, Mr. Lewin coordinated and led club meetings, purchased supplies for club activities, and created space for more open and healthy discourse surrounding mental health issues. And whereas Mr. Lewin served his school and the community with distinction in a variety of roles, including Student Council Association, Social Justice Board Member, and Environmental Board Member, Falls Church Education Foundation Student Representative, and Girls Lacrosse Team Manager, Mr. Lewin fulfilled his responsibilities with dedication and passion. And whereas Mr. Lewin, as a participant in musical and drama productions, has demonstrated poise, charisma, and leadership. And whereas Mr. Lewin challenged himself every year of high school by taking advantage of the school's offerings of honors, AP, and IB courses. Mr. Lewin is an IB Diploma Program candidate, and he will graduate with a GPA over 4.0 and will town Bowden College in the fall. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Falls Church City School Board extends its highest recommendation and deepest appreciation to Mr. Lewin for his exemplary services to the City of Falls Church, to Meridian High School, and to the extended community, and offers our sincerest congratulations and best wishes as he graduates and pursues a college education dated this 14th day of May 2024 and signed by all the school board members as well as the superintendent of public schools, Falls Church City Public Schools. Congratulations, Sean.
You've got your vote in, sure.
Sean and Tate.
Yes. Better.
All right. All right. Now we'll move on to 3.06. And we have two resolutions tonight. And then we'll move on to public comments. 3.06, we'd like to enter into the resolution 12-24, the Asian American Pacific Islander Month. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry. Do I have a, can you read the resolution in first? Sorry.
Absolutely.
Vice Chair.
Falls Church City Public School Board Resolution 12-24, Asian American Pacific Islander Month. Whereas the month of May is recognized as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and whereas Falls Church City Public Schools are committed to recognizing and celebrating the diverse cultures represented in our community, staff, and students. And whereas in 1992, President George H.W. Bush designated May as Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And whereas as of 2022, 20.6 million Americans identify as Asian Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. And whereas 7% of the total United States population is Asian American Pacific Islander. And whereas there is great diversity among the population of Asian American Pacific Islanders originating from 24-plus countries. And whereas celebrating Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month is one way that we can honor the many contributions of Asian American Pacific Islanders to our schools, our community, and our nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board does hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Falls Church City Public Schools, and urges all to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Teis. Do I have a second? Actually, I do. I need the motion first. I need a motion first. Mr. Anderson?
I move that the school board approve resolution 12-24, Asian American Pacific Islander Month as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Anderson, thank you. All in favor? Say yes. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on now to 3.07, Resolution 13-24, Jewish American Heritage Month. Ms. Silverman, can you please read the resolution?
Falls Church City Public School Board Resolution 13-24, Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas between 1995 and 2006, Presidents Clinton and George W. Bush made proclamations that May would include Jewish American Heritage Weeks. And on April 20, 2006, President George W. Bush issued the first presidential proclamation which designated May 2006 as Jewish American Heritage Month. And whereas May is Jewish American Heritage Month, established by the United States Congress to recognize a more than 360-year history of Jewish contributions to American culture. And whereas Jewish Americans, in the face of unspeakable discrimination and adversity, have fought tirelessly to realize the promise of the nation's freedom and continue to teach us empathy and compassion inspired by their parents and grandparents. And whereas Jewish Americans have helped bring about enduring progress in every aspect of society, shaping our country's character and embodying the values we hold dear. And whereas Jewish communities continue to confront hostility and bigotry. And whereas determined to confront racism, many Jewish Americans found a cause in the Civil Rights Movement and a call for freedom and justice. And whereas we recognize the history of Jewish contributions to American culture, which acknowledges the achievements of American Jews in the fields ranging from sports and arts and entertainment to medicine, business, science, government, and military service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board affirms May as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. I'd like a motion for Resolution 13-24. Ms. Henderson?
I move that the school board approve Resolution 13-24, Jewish American Heritage Month as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy? Thank you very much. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right. That concludes our recognitions and reports section of the agenda. And now we'll move on to the public comments and requests section, section four. In accordance with school board policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members and for the record be disposition of requests. Ms. Caddell, do we have any written requests or notice for public comments?
Yes, we did receive one written request on class placements.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that'll be into the record. Oh, public comment? Okay. All right, for the record, do you mind stating your name?
My name is Gavin Hale.
Thank you, Gavin. All right.
All right. So hello. Yep. As previously stated, my name is Gavin Hale. I am a junior at a school that has solar panels, geothermal heating, and electric buses. My school is very proactive in combating the climate crisis. As you all probably know, the school I'm talking about is Meridian High School. What you probably don't know is that last year, our sustainable school only got two students, me included, to sign up for the newly created Sustainable Energy Class. Since the class was newly created and had very little visibility, not many students knew about its existence. As a result, the class was canceled, but only for a few days. Mr. Sowers, counselor at Meridian High School, and Dr. Noonan, superintendent of Falls Church City Public Schools, worked hard to reinstate the class for me and Gia Khan. I thank them both for making that happen. Gia and I are enjoying the class, and without it, I wouldn't be interested in studying renewable energy. The point of me telling you all this is to let you know that there is a lack of interest among students in studying renewable energy. I think that now more than ever, due to the climate crisis, it is extremely important that there is more awareness in this field. I wanted to create a renewable energy club to not only learn more about renewable energy, but to spread awareness about the ways to be more sustainable. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a sponsor through the school, so I had to create my club outside of the school and partnered with the Falls Church Climate Action Network. And would like to thank John Ward within the FCCAN for helping make this possible and helping to organize my first event. Speaking of, I just held my first event today at Meridian High School in partnership with FCCAN. We held our event, it was an EV event with Tesla, and we asked the question, are EVs the future of transportation? I believe they are. I believe they are an important way to help reduce carbon emissions. They offer a sustainable solution to combat climate change. And unlike traditional gas-powered cars, EVs produce zero tailpipe emissions, reducing harmful pollutants and improving air quality. Additionally, EVs are more efficient with higher conversion rates from energy to power, leading to reduced greenhouse gas emissions over their lifetime. By promoting electric vehicles, we're not just driving cars. We're driving towards a cleaner and healthier future for our community. I'd like to explore opportunities for collaboration or ways to boost awareness of renewable energy in our schools. Your support in any form would greatly contribute to our shared goal of promoting sustainability within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teal. Yes, and your event tonight almost coincided with the school board meeting, so we appreciate you making it over here on time. So thank you for the comments. All right. Ms. Caddell, are there any other comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right, now we'll move on to section five for the budget public hearing number two. In accordance with school board policy BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, those needing a reasonable accommodation or who need interpretation may have extended time. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. Ms. Caddell, do we have any written or notice public statements for the budget?
We do not have either.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right, now we'll move on to section six, closed meeting. We're going to move to a closed meeting. I'm going to need a motion for moving to closed meeting. Mr. Anderson?
Pursuant, I move that pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, staff separation, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments and resignations. And student matters under section 2.2-3711A2, non-resident tuition students.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Murphy? Thank you. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Dr. Noonan?
10 minutes.
10 minutes. Okay. So we'll exit and we'll convene in a closed session and be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Okay. We are all back. All right. We'd like to now move to six point oh three, reconvene to open meeting. Can I please have a motion to reconvene? Ms. Murphy?
I recommend that the board reconvene to open meeting.
Can I have a second? Ms. Vice Chair Tice, thank you. All in favor say yes. Any opposed? All right. That's the next one, we certify, yeah. I can do it. All right, now we're gonna move to seven point oh, um, seven point oh one, certify the closed meeting. Uh, can I please have a motion to certify the closed meeting? Mr. Anderson?
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. Ms. Caddell, can you please take role?
Uh, yes. Doc, uh, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Silverman?
Yes.
And Ms. Tice.
Thank you, Ms. Caddell. All right, now we're gonna look to Section Eight, Consent Agenda. Uh, we have a consent agenda on personnel items, advisory committee appointments and resignations, student matters, and approval, uh, approval to dispose of assets and consent agenda. For this, we're going to use a unanimous consent agenda for these items. Okay. Uh, consent agenda has been approved. All right. And now we'd like to, uh, invite, uh, our, uh, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, we'd like to invite, uh, Dr. Dustin Wright, who is a part of the, uh, the, uh, uh, our newest Chief of Schools in the position that we have newly created in Falls Church City. We're looking forward to having his leadership and his expertise. Uh, Dr. Noonan, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, I'd love to take just a minute to, um, welcome Dr. Wright and his family this evening. We, uh, just for the good of the community, um, about, um, oh, six or seven months ago, we previewed that we were going to, um, create a position, um, that would be new, but not a new position. Uh, in other words, not an additional person, um, but repurposing the head of schools position that was once held by Valerie Hardy, um, into a chief of schools that would, um, work very closely with all of the principals, assistant principals, um, aspiring leaders, um, work closely with our chief academic officer to really, um, ensure that we have a strong, cohesive, and coherent instructional program, um, from pre-K to twelve. Uh, one of the things that Ms. Hardy did while she was here, um, very extraordinarily, extraordinarily, was to create a, uh, a very nice cohesive program from grade six to twelve. And now, uh, Dr. Wright is here to, to sort of help us with that, um, thinking, uh, K, pre-K to twelve. Um, and will take on the supervision, um, of our school leaders, which has been, um, really the purview of the chief academic officer, um, Dr. Bates, but with all of the, um, new changes in curriculum and instruction that are coming out from the state of Virginia and the requirements that are coming down with the new accountability and accreditation system, um, Dr. Bates really needs to focus on curriculum and instruction. So, um, the opportunity arose to repurpose this position. We went through a, a pretty rigorous process. We had, uh, a number of candidates that applied, um, some sitting superintendents, um, and, and others, and, uh, out of, out of the applications and the, um, interviews, Dr. Wright rose to the top, um, with all of the folks that were on the committee, did an extraordinary job, um, comes highly recommended from, uh, his current system, um, and has had an opportunity to be both an elementary principal and a secondary, uh, principal at the middle school level, and currently works in the central office in charge of, uh, strategic planning, um, in Fairfax County. So, he's had a large, uh, school division, uh, and we're excited to have him in a small school division. He's an extraordinarily relational person, um, very caring, uh, when you talk with the families that he's worked with, including some of our staff members, um, who have had kids in his schools. Um, they speak incredibly highly of him. So, um, with that, we'd like to welcome Dr. Wright, uh, and his family to the podium, and if you'd like to say a few words, we'd welcome that. Welcome to Falls Church City Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Uh, it's a privilege to be with all of you. So, good evening to the members of the board, the educators and staff members in this division, the family members and community where these five amazing schools reside, and most importantly, and Sean, you'll have to represent them to the, uh, students here in Falls Church City Public Schools. My name is Dustin Wright. I'm extremely proud that I will be the first Chief of Schools in the Falls Church City School System. I have a few brief remarks, but the first thing I want to share this evening, the first thing I want a- all of you to hear is how much of an honor it is to be joining this Falls Church City family, how excited I am about this opportunity, and that I can't wait to get to work. Now, I'm gonna come back to this idea of being proud a few times, um, throughout these remarks this evening, but with that in mind, I would like to tell you what I'm most proud of. And this was the, for the interview panel, this was the first thing that they heard about me, um, as we were talking about this. And the thing I'm most proud of is my family, and so I'm so lucky that they're here with us tonight. Um, you'll, um, hopefully get to see them at many Falls Church City events, um, and run into them at, um, um, uh, sporting events and evening events at the schools, and we can't, I can't wait for you to meet all of them. But my wife, Monique, is here. She's an elementary school educator. And my three kids here, they're, they're what I'm most proud of. Uh, my son, Emmett, is a sixth grader, uh, he's here. And he was going to not be able to be here because there was a, a baseball game planned tonight. He's a pitcher, and if you're the parent of a pitcher, it, it makes speaking at this podium, you know, nothing, um, as opposed to, um, the stress that comes with every ball and strike. But, um, he's here tonight. Um, he's a baseball player, he's a leader, and he's an awesome kid, and I'm proud to be his dad. I'm also here with our two twins, um, Hank and Charlotte. Um, they're in fourth grade. And, um, Hank is a, an inventor, a creator, and a baseball player as well. And Charlotte's a artist and a crafter and a, uh, she runs track and cross country. And it's so amazing, and I'm so lucky and so proud to be their dad. Now, in the weeks and months ahead, there'll be many opportunities for you to continue to learn more about me. And, but most importantly, I think for me, it's gonna be really important to, for me to learn about Falls Church City. And one of the key priorities that I'll focus on this summer, as I begin in this role, is learning about, um, what makes this, um, school system such a special place for all the students. And in my opinion, the most important part of learning is the idea of listening, and I'll be doing lots of that as I start in this new role. I wanna learn about what are the strengths of this division and how we can work together to continue to help them grow. I wanna work, I wanna learn about what, some of the challenges of this division, um, what is it facing and how we can collaborate and work on them together. But I did wanna take the opportunity this evening to share a few things that are incredibly important to me as an educator and as a leader. I wanna share three things that inspire me, that challenge me, and that energize me as I come to work every single day. The first thing, and this is where it all starts for me, is the students. The students should be at the center of all that we do. They are the reason that we come to work every day, and serving each and every one of them is a tremendous responsibility for us all. We need to keep their needs and what is best for them at the forefront of every decision that we make, every challenge that we overcome, and every opportunity that we have. that we make, every challenge that we overcome, and every opportunity that is presented for them to meet their limitless potential, to ensure that every student feels seen, valued, and heard each day in Falls Church City. The second thing I think is important, and it's critical, to support and empower the leaders, the educators, and staff members that work with these students every single day. I can't wait to meet the staff at these five schools and at the central office and work with them to support these students, to help provide them with the resources, encouragement, feedback, high expectations, freedom to take risks, meaningful opportunities for continuous learning, and a safe and culturally responsive environment that values staff voice, to work with our educators to assure amazing things are happening for those students every day. And then finally, I believe that it is critical that we ensure every member of the Falls Church City community feels connected to our schools. At every interaction, family and community members should feel warmly welcomed as partners with the school system, supporting the educational success of their students. Now, I mentioned earlier that I would come back to this idea of being proud and the pride that I feel about this new opportunity, and I want to let you know some of the things that I'm most proud of. I'm most proud to be joining a division that offers a premier international baccalaureate education for all students in a caring pre-K to 12 academic community. I'm proud to be joining a division that challenges itself to design innovative learning experiences that meet the needs of each and every learner. I'm proud to be joining a school division that implements practices in classrooms that engage, empower, and include the whole learner through various opportunities so they can attain their post-secondary goals and lifelong success. And I'm proud to be joining a division that values diversity and inclusivity, where all are welcomed and celebrated for the unique perspective and diversity of experience that they bring to the community. But most importantly, I'm proud to be joining the Falls Church City Public School Division. I'm going to finish these remarks right where I started with the same words. It's an honor to be joining this Falls Church City family. I'm incredibly excited about this opportunity, and I can't wait to get to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, for attending. Thank you. We're looking forward to you getting started as well, and obviously, there's going to be a lot of excitement of introductions and getting you all to understand where we are as a community and getting you plugged into that. We have five amazing building leaders that I am sure you're looking forward to working with. We are impressed with the magic that they can create every day with their staff, and so looking forward to you joining that. And as Hank and Emmett and Charlotte, you all have seen, we, after events like this, we always take pictures, so now the five of you we'd like to invite up to take a picture if you don't mind. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for joining us, to the Wright family. I know it's a school night. You've got young kids. We just wanted to give you the opportunity. At this point, if you wanted to leave, now would be a great time. Where do you think you're going? No, I'm just kidding. Principals and staff, thanks so much for being here tonight and celebrating with us. I know it's a school night for you as well, so safe rides home. Okay. We're going to move on to our business section of the agenda, action and information. We're going to move on to 9.01, adoption of the 2024-2025 school operating budget. I think, yep, Dr. Noonan?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gould, and for the opportunity to talk about our budgets. Tonight, well, first of all, tonight represents the end of a long road for us. We have been working since the first meetings with the city council in December through the process of our development of the school board, or first the superintendent's budget that was ultimately approved onto the school board's advertised budget, and tonight is the night that you all go forward with your approval of the school board's adopted budget. So first and foremost, congratulations to all of you for getting to this point. It has been a long road for the community. We do start in the December timeframe. We go through the process through January, February, and March, and then we do ask the city council to incorporate our budget into the overall city budget. Under normal circumstances, I would say to you tonight, we're going to adopt three budgets, the operating budget, we're also going to adopt the food services budget and the community services budget, and I would say to go ahead and approve those as presented. However, last night, some action was taken by the city council that requires us to have a conversation tonight. Last evening, for the first time in seven years, the city council did not adopt the school board's budget, and as a consequence of that, we need to make some adjustments in the motion that we're going to prepare, that has been prepared for you this evening to reduce the school's budget by $283,000. This, of course, was not an easy task for us to consider. We had been asked to provide some information about where we would make those cuts if we were to look at a reduction. We did provide information to the city manager's office and the chief operator, or chief financial officer, that the cuts would come from three places, or two places for a cut and then some additional reduction. And so what we're looking at this evening is reducing by two positions in the schools. The first is, and this is a longer story, so if you'll, bear with me here, the first is to reduce a high school counselor or a secondary counselor, and then also reduce the math resource teacher at, currently at Oak Street Elementary School. Those two positions, in addition with some end-of-year savings that we achieved in our healthcare costs, when taken in combination, will help us get to that $283,000 reduction. Obviously, we didn't put those positions in the budget for your approval as part of the superintendent's budget because we didn't think they were important. We thought they were incredibly important to have a math resource teacher and also to have a secondary counselor, particularly as we're coming out of COVID and we're doing a lot of pandemic recovery. In fact, those two positions had previously been funded through the ARPA money, which is the Recovery Act money that we received a couple of years ago. Those two positions became so important that we moved them into the operating budget to make them permanent positions, because we're seeing the outcome and the fruit of the math resource specialist at Oak Street Elementary, we're seeing the fruit of having less discipline incidences, less issues with mental health at the high school based on having additional counseling services there. So unfortunately, not putting those into the operating budget means that we will now have to find a way to fund them through one-time money. So the presentation of where we would like to take those funds from, it would be out of our year-end savings, along with the amount that would come that would be consistent with the offset with health, the healthcare reduction and savings. We, we will be able to fund those positions through one-time money, which means that we will have a cliff again next year, which means that we'll have to put those positions back into our budget and hope that we can get them through the operating budget next year. That, that is an unfortunate thing for us, particularly given the state of play. Now, I do want to say one other thing as we're sort of contemplating tonight's budget, and I think this is the right move, and I, this is why we're recommending it to you tonight, and that is to go ahead and fund those two positions out of the one-time money along with the savings from healthcare. We do know that a budget was adopted by, was signed by the governor yesterday that will bring us some additional funding from the state. We don't know what the total final amount will be, but it would likely be more than the $283,500 that we're going to pay for out of one-time funding. We could, down the line, take some of that money that we receive from the state government and take those two positions out of one time and put them into permanent funding with the state money. I think it's really important, though, to note that that additional state money that we were hoping to receive, which it looks like we are going to receive, was earmarked for growth. We were anticipating about 100 more students this year. We've received 145 more students this year. We're anticipating 85 more students next year. We've already seen over 100 new students enroll in Falls Church City Public Schools. The growth is here, the growth is coming, and so that money that we were going to use for those positions that were part of operating, that are now going to have to be reduced and paid for out of one time, would have allowed us to use the state funding to fund a staffing reserve that would allow us then to hire teachers as we get more students. Unfortunately, because of the cut from the city council last night, we're not able to do that. So our intention is to park, if you will, that state money that's coming in, once we determine what the total amount is, into a staffing reserve, and then in August, decide whether or not we want to pull money out of that staffing reserve and pay for the two positions that we're funding this eve, that I'm suggesting we fund this evening out of one-time money to make them permanent, or to use that money somewhere else for staffing. Just as a reminder, if we do park that money there and we have the conversation and we're thinking August timeframe would be a good time to have it, anything that comes out of that money from the state is money that's reduced in the staffing reserve that we would have paid for more teachers that would be coming into the system based on growth. So while it was only a penny, you know, quote unquote, "only a penny" last night that was split between the general government and the schools, it has significant impact on our ability to hire teachers in an, in an ongoing way. So with that, my recommendation tonight is to fund those two positions out of one-time money, take the state money when we have the final amount, put it into a staffing reserve, and then in August, have a transparent conversation about how best to use those funds from the state moving forward. But by paying for those two positions out of one-time money, we will be able to have a balanced budget moving forward that funds the total budget that the school board had as part of your adopted budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Questions, comments from the board? Ms. Silverman?
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, for that, and I, I do support your recommendation on moving forward with the budget. Unfortunately, having to deal with what happened last night and making those final decisions on what we ultimately fund in August, so we have time for community feedback, we have time to talk amongst ourselves in open meeting, we have time to, you know, process what happened. I don't think there was enough time for any of us to really process what was happening since this additional cut, because what we'd been hearing since December was that there was going to be a one-cent cut, and then it felt like at the 11th hour, there ended up being a two-cent cut. And that is, as you said, that is a significant blow to our budget. I am very, I'm, to be honest, I'm pretty disappointed in what city council did. I have heard that the average savings per family will be about $100 per year, and I would rather have a fourth-grade specialist, you know, and that, the $100 per year, to, in my viewpoint, is not significant enough in order to eliminate positions, and I know city council's also going to have to make spending decisions as well. So I would rather have services over the tax cut, but that's an issue for city council. But thank you for your recommendation tonight.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Chair Gould. I just wanted to, I think, looking forward, I think, thank you, Dr. Noonan, for emphasizing the fact that the district is growing. You know, we put a lot of effort with the city council into developing enrollment projections that we feel are pretty solid, and, you know, I'm just looking at the, at the book here. In the update that Kristen presented, we have 2662 students right now. We're projecting a little over 2,700 next year, but if we look just two years ahead, we're expecting an 8%, 8.6% growth in students. And some of that is linear, you add one teacher, right, but there's going to be points where we're going to need to add additional support, right? And so I'd like to ask Dr. Noonan, like, about how many students do we add? I know this depends on the school and various other factors. You know, at what points do we have inflection points where it's not just incremental teacher, but it's an incremental special education teacher, as well as another reading specialist, as well as something else? Because I think that that's probably, that kind of planning is really important because it's not just a linear growth curve, there's actually things that we have to do to make to short, investments we need to make, and I think it's important that, you know, we've been transparent with the numbers, that we're transparent moving forward with the city council about, hey, this is what's going to take to maintain these schools moving forward, you know, given the growth in the city that we've all been, you know, that, that we've invested in. So it's not just about saving a penny here, it's about looking forward and seeing what we could do to make sure we can maintain the schools.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. You're right, because it's not, it's not a linear equation where, you know, 30 kids generates another teacher. And, and it's a terrible answer, but it does sort of depend on grade level, where they come in, schools, et cetera. So let me just give an example. There is a standard of quality, you know, SOQ, that I think we've kicked around here a little bit, just in terms of numbers. So I don't know off the top of my head, but I think that the standard of quality for a school counselor is 250 students per one counselor. So once we get over 500, we need to start considering an additional counselor on top of additional teacher. That also means that more kids are going to be eating lunch, so we might need another cafeteria person. It also means that we're going to have more kids taking buses, which could potentially mean that we needed another bus driver. So all of those things do come into play as we extend our use of buildings, you know, the footprint of cleanable space for custodians goes up, and if that is the case, we may need more custodians. So there isn't a, there is, there is a formula to it, but it really does depend on where students come. They don't come in nice neat packages where you get 45 second graders all at the same time, you know, you might get 10 here, 10 there, 15 here, three here, but there is, it's interesting, because if you look at the standards of quality, it really is the related services that are likely to go up just as quickly, if not faster, than the classroom teachers. And sort of the deal was that we tried to make at the front end of this budget with our partners in the general government, and I believe you all made this case with the city council, was we've taken care of the facilities, we have the space for the students, we need the city council's support to fund the positions and the operations, and unfortunately, that, that didn't happen last night, and so as a consequence, we're going to have to figure some things out. But one of the things we could do is, over the summer, sort of an analysis to see, at what point do we need to add an assistant principal? At what point do we need to add a bus driver? What point do we need to add related service people beyond just teachers? Because we haven't added positions, for example, to the central office, and as we have more people, there's more payroll, there's more HR issues, there's more curriculum development. There, I mean, there's, there is sort of a waterfall and cascading effect to, to this more than just, just one classroom teacher. So I appreciate the question.
Other questions? Ms. Henderson?
Dr. Noonan, thank you for being creative and finding ways to keep our students whole in this situation. I share your frustration with the process and the feeling that this is 11th hour. I just have some clarifying questions about, so, in terms of thinking about planning forward, because one of the things I think is going to be really important for city council to understand going forward is that these positions are recurring, whatever we're funding them. So as you called it a cliff, I would call it next year, the budget's going to be just that much larger because these positions weren't in it, so there's a little bit of an optical illusion there about what the, the whole cost of actually running the schools is. You mentioned state funding, and I know you don't know how much that is yet. Is that new funding? Is that a recurring funding? Like, is that going to come in every year now once it's been passed? Or is that also something that could disappear at any point in time?
It's a great question. Typically, we budget as though it's recurring. What we do know is that we are anticipating more state revenue than we got last year, but less than we anticipated, and the reason that we have And the reason that we expect less than anticipated is the sales tax is reduced, because the gaming, the skills game stuff came out of the budget. But we are expecting more funding than last year, and typically, we get a little more each year from the state.
Thank you for answering that. Second question, you talked about potentially moving these positions, which we clearly need in our schools, from one-time to recurring at some point in the year. Beyond the semantics of that, can you help me understand the practicalities of what that means and the implications for future planning and future budgeting?
Sure. I think the practicality is, it's a budget transfer for us. It's an internal process that Kristen, Michael, and Michelle Koppick would take care of to move it out of one-time funding and into the recurring. The implications in long-term for us is that it grows, first of all, sort of to your point, it grows the budget, which we had intended to do, was to grow our budget by actually less than the amount of percentage that we were anticipating getting from the city council. We were expecting a 6% overall growth in the budget, not the 8%, because of the way the dollars work. But by making them recurring, those would be there consistently year over year. To your point, I don't know if I'm answering your question to the best of my ability here, but to your point, because they are one-time right now, they could go away if the board or we all decided to make a different decision about how to use those funds from the state.
And then following on that question, some might say, you know, that backend money is fungible, we have this money, we have that money.
Yeah.
Whatever. Can you explain to me why, you know, what would be the impact of using one-time funds to pay for more teachers, right? So that we flipped it.
Yeah. That's a major problem and a very poor decision-making process from a fiscal perspective, fiscal responsibility perspective, because one-time money is one-time money. And teachers don't go away. They stay every year. And in the growth that we're in, particularly now, we are not going to be reducing teachers over the next five years. We're only going to be increasing teachers. So, you know, it's like taking money out of your savings account to pay for your cable bill every month. The cable bill never stops, but your savings account finally goes away. And when that goes away, your cable goes away. And that's where the cliff is. And so by using one-time money to fund teachers that are recurrently coming back each year, that money will dry up quickly.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarifications.
Sure. Other questions or comments about the budget? Ms. Vice Chair Tice.
Yes, I just wanted to echo both my support for this creative solution and my gratitude for the work, Dr. Noonan, of you and your staff, to come up with this solution and make sure that we're still positioned for a successful year next year. I did, just in case, for the public who's watching, in case they're not watching every minute of every public meeting, I did want to share that we shared a public message with city council last night on behalf of the school board. And although we all are collectively frustrated with the timing and the communication of this process, I think we remain collectively also committed to the revenue sharing agreement. And I know, I really do believe that council heard our concerns, and I look forward to working collectively, collaboratively with them next year to make sure that this process is smoother and the timing and the communication is improved for next year.
If I could just add to that, just to say that, you know, after speaking with the city manager, I think he also is committed. And it's not a matter of doing the process earlier. It's a matter of committing to the process and seeing it all the way through. In fact, this year, we actually waited for better revenue picture to come in and pushed everything out several weeks, because our process had been in place and has been so successful over the last number of years. And I think that's what's made it so challenging, is that we have built this trust over the last several years, that this process wasn't going to change. And this year, when it changed, I think that's where the challenge came in. And so I think not starting earlier than December, which we do already, it's just finishing out the process in good collaboration and good, strong communication, which will make the difference.
That's right. Thank you.
Other comments? Questions from the board before we vote? Okay. All right, then we'll look at 9.01, adoption of the 2024-2025 School Operating Budget. I'm going to seek a motion. And Dr. Noonan, just to clarify, this motion does include the amendment? Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we've got the amendment in there. Okay. A motion. Ms. Ortiz.
I move that the school board adopt the 2024-2025 School Operating Fund budget in a recurring amount of $64,946,093, requiring city funding of $52,567,920, as detailed in the school board's advertised budget, with the following modifications. Decrease revenue from the general government by $283,500, and increase the use of one-time revenue by $208,860. Move the secondary counselor and elementary math resource teacher from recurring to one-time funding, and decrease the cost of health insurance based upon the final rates from the state by $74,640. The following one-time expenditures are approved to revise the fiscal year 2025 original budget. Expenditures funded through FCCPS is fund balance in the amount of $364,290, and general government pandemic funding in the amount of $156,645.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes for adoption of the 2024-2025 School Operating Budget. And let's move on to 9.02, adoption of the 2024-2025 School Food Services Budget. Dr. Noonan, can we move forward with this motion? Okay. Can I seek a motion from the board? Thank you. Was, oh, was that Ms. Henderson, or was that? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. 9.02.
I move that the school board adopt the 2024-2025 School Food Services Budget with receipts and disbursements in the amount of $1,519,553, as detailed in the school board's advertised budget.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. And finally, 9.03, adoption of the 2024-2025 Community Services Budget. Ms. Murphy.
I move that the school board adopt the 2024-2025 Community Services Fund budget in the amount of $2,317,000, requiring a total city appropriation of $107,500, as detailed in the school board's advertised budget.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. And that concludes our adoption of all three budgets for the 2024-2025 school year. And as we'd like to echo our sincere appreciation to Michelle Koppick and Kristen Michael for all of your help, all of your dedication for leading us through this process, we are always indebted to, no pun intended, to the work and dedication that you have and the discussions that we have. So thank you, Dr. Noonan, as well. And that concludes our budget.
And now we move into the HR phase. So we'd like to thank Amy Hall in advance, as our Director of HR, who will be letting contracts for our staff either tomorrow or Thursday, based on the outcome of the vote tonight. So thank you so much for allowing us to continue to do business. And congratulations to all of you on your incredible work on this budget.
All right, great. Thank you very much. All right. All right, and let's go ahead and let's move on to 9.04. And we're going to go ahead and move into second reading and adoption of policies, and this is Ms. Minson.
Good evening. We have seven policies for second reading this evening, but not many of which were, had changes from the last meeting. The first policy is Policy AE, School Division Goals and Objectives. There were no changes when this policy was presented last month. Any questions about Policy AE? Seeing none, the next policy is Policy AF, Comprehensive Plan. The modifications to this policy would add a cross-reference to Policy 1A1, but there were no changes from first readings. Any questions for Policy AF? All right, the next policy is Policy BHB, School Board Member in Service Activities. This is a current policy that had some changes proposed by the VSB, but there were no changes proposed at first reading. Any questions on BHB? All right, next then is Policy DB, Annual Budget. There were no changes from first reading last month. Any questions on Policy DB? All right, next then is Policy IC, School Year. This policy, there was a clarification at line 46, added the word Virginia to clarify that the addition of 10 unscheduled remote learning days would need to be declared by the Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, but there were no other changes from first reading. Any questions on Policy IC?
Ms. Ortiz.
Yeah, I have a question, and my apologies for missing the April meeting at which this was discussed. Lines 81 through 83 refer to the advisory committee that could be appointed to help with the committee. We have a calendar policy now that basically is a formula for the calendar. I don't feel particularly strongly, but it's a little bit superfluous. So I just wanted to note if that was discussed at the, after that was discussed at the parent meeting, if the board had any opinion about whether or not to strike lines 81 through 83.
If you ask for opinion, I would say it is, to some degree, superfluous, but I like the option of having it in there, just in case that we need to have some kind of community input on the calendar, if there's any kind of events that we would need. But Ms. Minson, is it correct that this is optional, this is worded correct as?
It is optional. My understanding now is, in preparing the calendar to bring to the board, Dr. Noonan and Ms. Michael and others, look at the calendar, look at how it aligns with other school divisions, talk to staff. So it is consistent with our current practices, although school board policy CC does outline what the calendar would look like. The advisory or the recommendations of others certainly are taken into account before it's presented to the board.
Okay. Ms. Ortiz. Okay. Great.
Any other questions on Policy IC? All right, then next is IKA, Parental Assistance with Instruction. During first reading, it was noted that not all parents might have the ability or the time to assist with instruction. So there were proposals at lines five, proposed changes at lines five and six, for the board to recognize that it can be beneficial when parents are able to provide instructional assistance. Any questions with Policy IKA? All right, then the final policy for second reading this evening is INDC, Religion in the Schools. This would be a new policy that would replace the current policy 6.8. Would welcome any questions on Policy INDC. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Minson, as always. All right, so with those policies, we're going to go ahead and I'm going to seek a motion for 9.04, second reading and adoption of policies. Mr. Anderson.
I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of policies AE, School Division Goals and Objectives, AF, Comprehensive Plan, BHB, School Board Member in Service Activities, DB, Annual Budget, IC, School Year, IKA, Parental Assistance with Instruction, and INDC, Religion in the Schools, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, now we'll move on to 9.05, approval of first reading of policies. Back to Ms. Minson.
Thank you. We have a few policies for first reading this evening, and it's slightly different than what we have done in the past. Many thanks to Ms. Henderson and Ms. Murphy for their help. I know at the work session last month, we talked about bringing policies. And the main policy that we're reviewing today is current policy 9.17. That's a policy that governs admission of students to FCCPS. That's a very large policy. It's about 12 pages long. So we're going to be doing something a little bit atypical and proposing changes to a numbered policy while taking out portions of that that will be shifting to lettered policy. So the first piece of 9.17 that will be coming out is going to be new policy JEB, Entrance Age, Admission of Persons Not of School Age. And this policy would remove portions from lines 12 through 24 of policy 9.17. So kind of taking those two policies together, we would be, the recommendation would be that policy JEB be adopted by the board, first reading tonight, second reading at the next meeting. And then policy 9.17 would strike the lines from line 14 to line 24. And then after the board adopts 9.17 at the meeting next month, 9.17 will be that much shorter, and we'll keep bringing portions of the admission policy back until we have all of the numbered policy replaced by all lettered policies. So taking the policy a bit at a time, and also taking this policy right now a bit at the time, the proposed changes in JEB are reflected in red line. It's what the board has typically done, removing the phrasing his and her, and changing that to them, and also making it clear that our school board superintendent, our school superintendent disseminates information received from the state superintendent of public instruction, similar to the change that was made in second reading to the policy this evening. Any questions about policy JEB or about the process of moving from 9.17 to these lettered policies? We're going to talk about 9.17 next again, but any questions on JEB?
Ms. Henderson.
Yeah, not so much on JEB, and thank you, Ms. Minson, because you put in a lot of work to make this work for us. So I just want to clarify for everybody what you said. We are proposing to approve basically a truncated version of policy 9.17 as-is next month, but we will continue truncating it until it is all in new policies over the next couple of months. And so for any community members who are listening, who have comments on other portions of 9.17, know that they will continue to be worked on over the next few months. This is not 9.17 as-is is now done and not going to be reviewed again. Just clarifying that.
That's absolutely right. Also, what the board, what we do when we go through policies is, we strike through things that will be changed from first reading to second reading. We add red font additions. So just as JEB will come back for second reading next month, 9.17 will come back for second reading next month. So in 9.17 now, there are strike-throughs. When it comes to the board for second reading, those strike-throughs will be taken away, the shorter policy will be up before the board. But it is my hope that through the months, we can shorten 9.17 and then ultimately fully replace it with lettered policies. All right, so any questions on JEB? Or should I dive into the next lettered policy that will be replacing this? All right, the next one then is Policy JECA, Admission of Homeless Students. There's a large section of policy 9.17 that begins on page four. I added the line numbers to 9.17, so it begins at line 124 and goes through till line 210. And it talks about the admission of homeless students under the federal law McKinney-Vento. So the VSB model policy on admission of homeless students, JECA, is actually very similar to what we currently have in policy 9.17. Did have a chance to review this policy with Robin Borum, who is our, one of our school's social workers and is our homeless liaison. She confirmed that policy JECA is consistent with our current practice and is almost line for line what we have in policy 9.17, with the exception that in policy JECA, at lines 145 to 162, there's a section on transportation. Our current policy 9.17 is silent on the transportation of students who are homeless students, but what is included in the model policy is consistent with our current practices for transporting students. And also, there's a definition section in policy JECA at lines 164 through lines 202 that is helpful, that is fully aligned with McKinney-Vento, but it's not currently language that's in 9.17. So that would be the additions of language to the policy, but it would not change any of our practices of supporting students who are, have uncertainty around their homeless or their housing. Happy to answer any questions about policy JECA, Admission of Homeless Children. Also, as with policy JEB, a cross-reference to policy JECA will be placed in the numbered policy 9.17. So if anyone were looking at our policy and wasn't sure what we, what the board's practice is or policy is for admission of homeless students, there's a cross-reference embedded within that numbered policy. So hopefully, in the interim, where we're still using numbered and lettered policies, someone who had a question or concern would be able to find it by having that cross-reference within policy 9.17. Okay, then the final policy that relates to policy 9.17 is our current policy IGBA. That policy is Programs for Students with Disabilities. The board had previously adopted this policy back in September of 2017, so it is time to review it. And the language that's included in the Child Find section at lines 37 to 46 is consistent with the Child Find section of policy. with the child fine section of policy 9.17 at lines 25 to 29. So rather than have, keep that section, we are proposing removing lines 25 to 29 of policy 9.17 and adding a cross-reference to IGBA. But for first reading this evening, it would be updating policy IGBA with lines 23 to 27 that were changes that were made to the Virginia Code. You'll also note that on page two of policy IGBA, there's additions of legal references, two cross-references to 22.1, the Virginia Code title governing schools, one to the Virginia Administrative Code at 8VAC 208130. And this policy, as it's currently written, the September 2017 adopted policy had no cross-references, but at first reading, we would be adding cross-references to policy IAA and IKF. There was one question regarding policy IGBA that Ms. Henderson and Ms. Murphy raised that I was able to run to ground after sending the draft policy to you all, but I did want to bring it up this evening. The title of the policy is programs for students with disabilities. This really is a policy for students with disabilities eligible under the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act or the IDEA. So one proposal, if it's amenable to the board, would be to add a explicit reference to the IDEA. My proposal in talking through this with Ms. Henderson and with Ms. Murphy would be to add it at line eight under the section talking generally. So the first line would read, "The Falls Church City School Board provides a free, appropriate public education for all children and youth with disabilities." And then before getting into the comma, ages two through 21, adding a parenthetical that says "as defined in the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act." Because while that code section is cited in the cross-references on page two, and while the, many of the terms that are used throughout this policy are clearly from the IDEA, I don't think it hurts to add that explicit cross-reference to make it clear that when we're talking about students with disabilities, we're talking about students with disabilities as found eligible under the IDEA. So if the board is amenable to that change, I could, I would provide that in red font at second reading, just like we did for two of the policies that we covered in second reading earlier. But we don't have to add that. Would the board be interested in adding that language? Seeing head nods. All right, so I will make that change, Ms. Murphy.
I just wanted to say that I support that change particularly because I think sometimes there's confusion in the world of, you know, assisting children with disabilities. And so I think this just adds a little bit of clarity in an already confusing space that this policy particularly pertains to children who are eligible, who are found to be eligible for IEPs, but that there are students who have disabilities who are not eligible for IEPs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or concerns with policy IGBA, programs for students with disabilities? All right, those are the policies for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minson, for all the work on this. And obviously, this is exciting to see the number of policies put forward. And always, Ms. Henderson and Ms. Murphy, thank you for your partnership with Ms. Minson on organizing this, and this is, this is exciting to see. I know Ms. Minson is, is very happy to see this kind of progress, so we're all, we're all excited as well. So thank you for all the work on this. All right, so for 9.05, approval of first reading of policies, I'm going to seek a motion. Ms. Murphy?
Sorry, I lost the page.
I move that the school board approve first reading of policies JEB, entrance age, admissions of persons not of school age, JECA, admission of homeless children, 9.17, admissions exceptions, and IGBA, programs for students with disabilities as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Henderson. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, approval of 9.05, first reading of policies. All right, thanks, Ms. Minson, again. All right, that concludes our business action information, and we're going to move on to our future agenda topics, Section 10. Dr. Noonan, preview?
Not a preview. This is an opportunity for you all to, I'm happy to preview if you want.
No, I keep mixing them up.
That's okay. That's okay. It's all new world here. But this is an opportunity for you all to share any thoughts you have about any, anything you'd like to see either in a Noonan's note or a work session, et cetera.
Well, you just made Dr. Noonan a little happier, so, so yes. All right, so, all right, well, thank you, Dr. Noonan, as always, to open up the opportunity. So it looks like we have, all current agenda items will hold for 10.01. And now we'll move back to Dr. Noonan for superintendent's report, 11.01.
I'd like to commend your Madeline Hunter wait time there, by the way, as you waited for everyone to, you know, think about it.
Think about it, yes.
All right, well, it's my privilege tonight to talk about a number of things that have been happening, and so this is a little bit longer. It's that time of year, so we've just got a lot going on. And the first was the bike walk and roll to school, and it was a really great success. And it is a project that our Health and Wellness Committee championed last year, and thanks to their advocacy with the SAOs, our teachers, our students, and our local bike shop in Conti's, they were able to pull that off. So the Meridian Bike Club received a Safe Roots to School grant sponsored by VDOT to spend money on safety equipment, to promote proper safety equipment, bike lights, reflective ankle straps and bells. And last week, for Bike to School, they hosted, quote unquote, "the bike buses" to the secondary campus and to Oak Street. So what is a bike bus, one might ask? It's a group of riders that follow a set of rules, specify stops along the way, pick up additional riders, and then they bike to their place, their ultimate place of going to school. And there will be a bike bus to the secondary campus every Friday through now till the end of the year. So if you're a secondary student and are interested in being part of that bike bus, we'd love to, love to have you join. Congratulations to the 23 middle and high school students who were selected as women of action that were recently recognized at the Women's History Walk last weekend for their passionate work on topics that they care deeply about. It was quite a moment for them to be recognized, and they were all very excited. Student registration for next year. I hope all of you have registered your kids that have kids going to our schools next year. The registration portal is open for parents of pre-K through grade 11 students to register. We're asking that all parents try to register their students as soon as possible. Our community goal is 90% of families being registered by June 7th, and right now, we're at about 36% completion. But we're already more than a third of the way, so I'm trying to keep it positive. But if everybody could register their kids for next year, that would be really helpful for us to get a sense of what our numbers are going to look like and get those bus routes together and everything else early in the process. This weekend is the FCEA Gala, and hopefully, we'll see many of you on Friday night. The Silent Auction is open now, and anyone can bid. Tickets are still available, but we are close to a sellout, so get them now if you're on the fence. So if you haven't already got your tickets, that would be great. Proceeds from this event do support our super grants, advanced teacher training wellness, family assistance fund, scholarship, ESOL, and special ed programs. The VSB A Showcase for Success, three programs have been included. We did send those out in the Showcase for Success. The first was Steam Night at Oak Street, and again, really excited to recognize Tosin Adaturo this evening, Give Day across all of our schools in the division, and then finally, the Community Engaged Medical Shadowing Program at Meridian High School. And then in terms of IB-infused teaching and learning, it's performance season, so if you haven't gotten to a concert, now's the time or show. If you can attend an art show, a performance, or athletic competition, there is one every night. So now's the time. Every school is showcasing their incredible talents, and our students are really thriving, and teachers are leading, and parents are supporting, and another sign that we're really, really kind of back to where we were pre-pandemic. Military Paths Day, Meridian students met with representatives from different branches of the US military during Military Paths Day. They chatted with the Air Force, Army, Virginia Air National Guard, Army National Guard, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, and Navy officers, asked questions about enlisting right out of high school, thinking about ROTC or Reserve Officers Training Corps, scholarships and nomination in the process for military academies. Finance Park, our seventh grade students took their annual trip to the Junior Achievement Finance Park and had the opportunity to experience the day in the life of an adult with a salary and a job. Students had to pay loans, talk about their family situation. Finance Park is a trip that enhances and brings to life what seventh graders learned during their financial literacy class and civics class. I'm particularly excited about it because I was part of the team that put together the Finance Park over in Fairfax County many, many years ago, and it's always fun to go. If you ever have a chance to go with your kids, I would highly recommend it because they draw kind of a life card, and it says, here's your lot in life. You've got three kids, this is your job, here's how much money you make, you need to budget for food and everything else, and kids always want to buy a Ferrari. And so then they realize, okay, I'm making $38,000, I've got four kids, I can't afford a Ferrari. So it's quite an eye-opening opportunity. Want to congratulate the Virginia Municipal League, seventh and eighth grade students that participated in the If I Were the Mayor contest last night. If you had an opportunity to see the city council meeting, Madeline Sherwood was recognized this year in first place for Region Five for her letter about sidewalks. And then Madeline Davidson won second place, Leila Carney won third place, and Caroline Flager received a special recognition. So we've got some, one, two, three, four, all girls ready to be mayor, sooner rather than later, I think. Ukuleles, keyboards, singing and dancing at Mount Daniel. The sweet sounds from the music room are turning into beautiful concerts. Ukulele Day was a chance for our second grade students to share their work on their instrument with their families and teachers, and first grade students are using keyboards to learn, play, and write music. The First Grade Spring Sing is this week during the school day, and both of these programs are funded through the Falls Church Education Supergrants. Did have an opportunity today to see Dr. Anderson there, watching, yep, you were there. Yep, I was there too, watching this incredible performance and was just a lot of fun. And a little shout out to Huxley, he had a, he had a solo and did a great job. And then returning to the Chicks to Hard Bargain Farm, if you know about the Chicks at Mount Daniel, it's the annual hatching of our chicks, and it did happen in our kindergarten this past month. The eggs were incubated and hatched at Mount Daniel, were cared for by our incredibly loving students, and gently returned to the farm for a great free-range life for as long as they live. In terms of the Student Environmental Action Showcase, 15 Meridian High School students participated in the 13th Annual Student Environmental Action Showcase at Northern Virginia Community College's Annandale Campus. This regional event welcomes students from Annandale, Alexandria, Arlington, Fairfax City, Fairfax County, Falls Church, Prince William, and beyond. Students presented their work on topics ranging from bee hotels to northern snakeheads to harnessing the power of the sun and much more. So Gavin Hale tonight talked about the desire of students wanting to participate in environmental action, and we're starting to see a pickup now. And I think a lot of it is due to Gavin's advocacy, and want to congratulate him on his incredible work. And lastly, congratulations to the cast and crew of Frankenstein that garnered six CAPPY nominations. And if you didn't see it, I'm sorry, it was by far the best show I've ever seen high school put on in my long career working with secondary schools. So congratulations to them on their six CAPPY nominations. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, for the report. Lots of exciting activity as we run out the end of the year. So now we'll move on to Section 12, Board and Student Liaison Comments, and we're going to go to our school board student liaison for his last update. I think this is actually his last meeting as well. So, Mr. Loon?
Okay, so IB and AP exams are in full swing at the secondary campus and will be continuing throughout the week. Graduation for the senior classes on the 28th of May. High school yearbooks have arrived and are for sale. There is a coffeehouse karaoke that's happening at the secondary campus on the 22nd of May. The Future Doctors of America Club is hosting Joe Carter, the Director of Emergency Management in Falls Church City, for a guest speaking event on the 29th to learn about emergency technical service and management, internship opportunities, and more. Spring sports are slowly finishing their regular seasons and making the transition into playoff rounds. Fall sports interest meetings are currently being held, and some students have put together a I Voted sticker designing contest to pass out at local polling places for the upcoming presidential election, and there is also a lot more going on. But I'd also like to speak a little more about my time on this board and extend my thank you. The time I've spent on this board has truly been a transformative experience for me and has emphasized the importance of speaking up and taking action in a real-world context. I saw how every word, every motion, and every resolution carry weight and having a direct impact on my community, the student body, the surrounding community, and my educators. Being a small part of this board has not only encouraged me to voice my opinions, but also to actively engage with the community, and even encouraged me to constantly take pictures of amazing community members, and thank you, Dr. Gould specifically, for that. But this unique experience has been incredibly formative for me, and truly unlike any other extracurricular activity that I've been involved in, it shaped me both as an individual and as a student, and has allowed me to witness this board's poise, dedication, and incredible ability to address important issues and make a positive impact. And I truly am so grateful for the opportunity to have been a part of this board and to have been some, even like somewhat contributed to meaningful change and advancement. This has shown me the power of collective action and the importance of being an active participant and shaping our community. This experience has instilled in me a sense of responsibility and a belief in the potential for positive change, and I'm walking away from this inspired to speak up, get involved, and try my best to make a difference in whatever community I end up, end up in in the future. And I'd like to thank Dr. Noonan, the entire board, Ms. Michael, Dr. Bates, Ms. Minson, Ms. Goodell, Mr. Brett, and Ms. Sharp, and anyone else who has made this experience possible and special, thank you so much for the year of great experience.
Thank you, Mr. Loon, for the comments. We wish you well in your endeavors, and we know at some time we'll be replacing, you'll be up here in the dais at some point, so we look forward to seeing you and leading the next generation. Mr. Anderson?
Let's have a few things. The Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board met last Wednesday at Berman Park to discuss playground equipment replacement, and they had quite a turnout. I think maybe we need to talk to them about how they get so many people at their public events, but that was a fun event, outdoor event, and lots of kids' participation in what they wanted to see in the playground, so that was fun. And I did want to give another shout out to the arts community in FCCPS. My wife and I were able to go to the, the art show at Meridian last month, and I think that we have many talented students there at the, at the high school. It was great fun and some very, very moving works of art. And then, as Dr. Noonan mentioned earlier, I was able to see, see my son at the Spring Sing, and I know that Ukulele Day was last week as well, and I think Ms. Gomares is doing a wonderful job over there, and I just want to give a shout out to her.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Henderson?
The BIE is doing its awards recognition at our next month's meeting, so we'll get to celebrate folks in the community again then. I want to shout out all of the PTAs for the wonderful Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week festivities that have happened a week ago now. And there's a lot of time and effort put in by PTAs and coordination of a lot of parents and all the community members who participated in that as well. The Meridian PTA is electing its next year of officers at their meeting tomorrow night, so I encourage everyone who has high schoolers or rising high schoolers to attend. They're also helping plan the graduation festivities. And a shout out to the Mary Ellen Henderson PTA who coordinated SOL snacks for the many SOLs that middle schoolers, especially eighth graders, have this month.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Ms. Silverman?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Vice Chair Tice?
I don't have anything to report either. We went to office hours, was that last week, this week, last week, and nobody showed up, so I guess the community is just very happy with us.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tice. And Vice Chair Tyson actually did, we did other things as well. We went to a, the school board office hour, or the office hours. We also attended the Public Leaders School Network, PLSN, with Dr. Noonan, with area leaders and superintendents and vice chairs. A great opportunity for us to network with our regional colleagues. We all did the Spring Retreat as a school board and a staff, which we talked about the budget process, we reflected on that, we talked about committees, and thinking about how to, how to work with the committees that we have, advisor with the committees that we have, advisory committees. And we also reflected on arts going forward. And then Ms. Henderson and I attended the office hours at the Mary Ellen Henderson as well. So a lot going on. Now we're going to skip Mr. Ortiz on purpose. Oh, wait, back to Ms. Vice Chair Tice.
So sorry, I did forget. That was a good reminder of our regional events. Last week, I did attend the Virginia School Board Association's Regional Annual Event, and it was actually really fantastic. All 13 school boards in the region were represented. So it was a great opportunity to meet school board members from around our region. And there's so much energy and collaboration with the leaders of that regional network now. So that was really an enjoyable night.
Yeah, thank you for attending for behalf of all of us and bringing Meridian art as well, in turn, the Oak Street art, to the art contests as well. So, okay. We're going to go ahead and skip Mr. Ortiz. And we'll, Ms. Murphy?
Sure. So on May 6, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting. There was, I don't have a lot to report from that meeting. However, we did have a really good discussion about planning for next year and goals. So I think we can expect some exciting things on the horizon from that committee. We also, I do, the committee is preparing its annual report for the board. And I know that a lot of work is going into that, so we can look forward to presentation of their annual report. On May 13, I attended the Daycare Advisory Board meeting. We got an exciting report from the director at Oak Street, and she talked about what they have planned for the summer. And, and the goal this year, I think, is for the director at Oaks, for the programming at Oak Street to align a little more with the programming at Mount Daniel. So for parents who have kids in each program, it'll be nice, maybe more convenient to have, to have some of the programming aligned. They too are preparing their annual report, so we can look forward to presentation of that. Let's see, in terms of the programming, so far, the enrollment for next year is looking good. Registration is still open for May 28. For those of you who don't know, they provide care on May 28 for graduate, families who have commitments with graduation. So they provide care on that day, and they have open enrollment for that. They've done some hiring recently, and they're really excited about the new people that are coming on board. That includes two aides, two students from, two high school students from Meridian are going to be aides over the summer, and one student from Marshall High School. They're very excited about that because they're hoping to, quote, "grow your, grow their own." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Ortiz?
Thanks, Chair Gould. I have two updates from liaison appointment, liaison duties, as well as a personal message regarding the liaison updates. The Coral Boosters met last Monday. They discussed of importance, some of the challenges with scheduling for Coral students that we took up a little bit during our, our retreat and hope that we are able to return to that topic in future discussions among the board and the schools. They celebrated a tremendous success of Karaoke Night. I didn't attend, but I think I probably can guess somebody else who did. And, and, but, you know, you don't need to have a special night to do karaoke. You can do it whenever you want. So. And, and they're looking forward to spring concerts and having a great time. The Band Boosters did not meet, but this is instrumental music performance season. The Meridian had a terrific concert last Thursday. The, the middle schools are next week, and then elementary schools are the following week. So please make time to attend those, meet those, those concerts. They're really tremendous. The, yesterday, May 13, the ESOL Advisory Committee met. That committee has come a long way and has really matured in the way that it approaches its work. They're in the process of thinking through actually next year in terms of how they can provide appropriate input to the board. And then also, they're in the process of forming parent groups and student support groups to help, to help to scaffold the needs for the, for that community. And they're in the process of writing their board, their, their board report for us. And we'll see that in about a month. And then, so I wanted also to provide a, I guess, to YouTube, basically, an announcement. My family and I are going to be moving out of the city in, soon. And as a consequence, I'm going to have to resign my position as a member of the school board effective June 15. I want to say that it's been an honor to serve the Falls Church community in this role for the past two and a half years. Over the short time that I've been on the board, I believe the board, working closely with Dr. Noonan and his team, have made significant progress maintaining and improving the Falls Church City Public Schools, positioning them for the growth that we're expecting, and ensuring that they fully serve each and every student now and in the future. There are many people to whom I owe a debt of gratitude for this service. First, I want to acknowledge my wife, Nicole, my children, Carlos and Carmen, for encouraging me to run and for supporting me through many late school board meetings and other commitments. I love them very much and appreciate all that they've done for me here. I'm grateful for the mentorship of former board members, Laura Downs and Sue Dimmick. I thank my fellow board members for being easy to work with, friendly in disagreement, and for being committed to the goal of developing better solutions by working together. I leave the board with direction I received from Valerie Hardy, former head of secondary schools and 2024 commencement speaker. Quote, "Keep your ear as close to the ground as you can. There are many voices that aren't elevated that need to be heard." I closed with a message to the people of Falls Church who put their trust in me during a turbulent time in 2021. Having been privy to an up-close view of the workings of our five schools, I can assure each of you that every one of the more than 500 teachers and staff of the Falls Church City Public Schools are 110% dedicated to the education of your children and supporting their individual needs. Further, Dr. Noonan and his team are laser-focused on making sure that all teachers and staff have the resources they need to best serve your children. So thank you again for the opportunity to serve you. I regret that I'm leaving, but I hope that, that there'll be many good years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz and Mr. Ortiz. And we'll, we will obviously acknowledge your last meeting. And in a couple of weeks from now, we also regret that you're leaving, but we are very excited for your family's next chapter, obviously with your daughter's next, next challenge as well. And we, we've all enjoyed working with you, but we will embarrass you more at your last meeting. So yes. And, and as we say goodbye to Mr. Ortiz and obviously, Mr. Luen, we're looking forward to saying hello to Dr. Wright. And so, so it's a, it's a meeting of hellos and goodbyes. It seems like, that seems to be part of the three. But thank you, Mr. Ortiz. All right, so that concludes the Board and Student Liaison Comments. Now we'll move on to approval of the minutes. And I'm going to look for unanimous action on approving the school board minutes for March 19 as presented. Okay, seeing all head nods. We have approved that. Now moving on to Section 14, Materials for Board Review. 1401, FCCPS Enrollment. 1402, Monthly Budget Monitoring Report. As always, these are for your review. Any questions or comments for Ms. Michael? Yeah, Ms. Michael for those. Okay. All right, with that, we conclude, and we are done. Adjourned, meeting adjourned.